I'm going to go ahead and call together this meeting on January 27, 2025 of the Board of Supervisors. We're going to start with a moment of silence and I'm going to turn it over to our County Administrator Angie Hill and two of our supervisors also want to say a few words.
Before we stand for a moment of silence, I just wanted to take a moment and remember Bill Brown who passed away last week. He was retired, as you know, from the Board of Supervisors. He served from 2008 till 2015. He was also retired police chief for the town of Blacksburg. He really had a huge impact on a lot of people. He was such a great person and I know that he will be deeply missed and will keep his family in our thoughts and prayers. I think Supervisor Biggs has something and maybe Supervisor King as well.
Okay. Well, what I would like to say is I was very blessed last Tuesday to run into Bill Brown over at the courthouse when I was with Tiffany Couch, the Clerk of Court. I'd gone over there to get sworn in for a duty and he was so very happy. Bill was so happy. He had just performed a wedding the day before and he goes, "You know, Mary, I'm getting all these requests from Radford and I really am enjoying performing these weddings so much." Because, you know, every time you saw Billy, he had a smile on his face and he was a very positive person and he knew everybody and everyone knew him. So I was lucky enough to serve two terms with him on the board and serve as his vice chair for two years. And so for our board, the advice that he would give, and I know Todd remembers this very well, he always compared the human heart to the board. And the human heart has four chambers and our board has seven districts. So the human heart needs all four chambers to work together for the heart to be at its best function, just like all seven districts need to work together to make our board successful for the citizens of Montgomery County. But more than that, my last statement right now about Bill is he had the biggest heart of all and everyone he ran into got to experience that. And thank you for letting me say that.
Supervisor King?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about Bill. When I first got elected, we had, in my district, we had a road out there, Dirt Glue Road. When I first took his office, I got phone calls. They wasn't happy with it. So I said, "Well, I'll have a meeting with you." And we had a group meeting out there, a neighborhood meeting. And I don't, I don't mind telling you, I was nervous because that's my first big one. I walked in the building where we had our meeting and there sat Bill. I said, "Sir, what you doing here?" He said, "I'm not going to let you do this by yourself." So that's the kind of person he was. He looked after everybody. I do appreciate having the opportunity to know the gentleman. Thank you.
Let us now rise as you're able for a moment of silence. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start this evening with a presentation on the Partnership for Progress. I'll invite Emily Gibson, the Director of Local Government and Community Relations with Virginia Tech Ford. Welcome, Emily.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I have a few slides I'm going to review with you. See if I remember how to do this. Just for a high-level overview on Partnership for Progress and then we'll have time for any questions. If you have questions on what I have to say or if there's something I didn't cover, just let me know. I guess the number one question we get in this work is what is Partnership for Progress? So hopefully you guys have all had a chance to, to see the website and I thought that the website does a good job. This screen grab showcases the logos of each of the entities that are partners in this, in this partnership. And then I highlighted a few of the words here because it is a shared effort, it is unique, it is proactive, we're not in a crisis situation, we're not coming from a place of deficit, we're coming at it proactively. And it's really a focused, year-long conversation about how we can create, hopefully, an actionable, actionable roadmap with some ideas moving forward around those shared challenges and opportunities in our community, of which we have many. And this work, one of the things that's highlighted is what we're already doing really well and how we might be able to build on that. But certainly, we're already hearing about plenty of our deficits and the direction that we have to move forward together when it makes sense. There's still going to be challenges that are solely Montgomery Counties. There's still going to be challenges that are solely Virginia Techs. But when it makes sense and when we can collaborate, how can we put our resources together as one group in one direction? So that's sort of the, the backstory on what Partnership for Progress is and how we got here. I will also share that each of these entities got together last spring, sat around a table with leadership and talked about, "This is an idea we could do if everyone's in." And at that time, everyone agreed that they were in, that this was something they're interested in doing. Each entity agreed to provide support in some way and we'll talk about this in an upcoming slide. But a lot of that is in-kind support, staff time, helping with logistics as needed. And so everyone is sort of pulling, pulling some weight in this because it's together. Obviously, all of us couldn't do this on our own. We have amazing staffs and teams, but we're all busy. So we have a consultant team that was brought in to really facilitate the work with us. They're linked strategic partners. They're based out of Washington, DC, but they work globally. And I wanted to share with you one of their initial takeaways. When the work first started, we had, they were here for multiple days and we did a lot of different events. So they could meet the maximum number of community members, learn the most, see the most. And they were able to see that we already had a pattern of working well together. The COVID-19 response was highlighted by many, our work around expanding passenger rail access and others. And what they said was, "It's really clear that everyone's operating from a place of possibility." And that was a really great takeaway for them because usually when they're doing work like this, it is a crisis. People are not willing participants. There's not a real spirit of collaboration. And so that was their initial takeaway and I thought that was important to share with you all because that was their first thought about our community. So what's engagement looked like so far in Partnership for Progress? This is just a few examples. We have a robust steering committee. There's about 21 members. Mr. Fidjikowski serves on, of the steering committee as a representative for Montgomery County. But we have Dr. Bregan with K-12, members of the business community, Steve with the Chamber is a representative. We have nonprofits, the Community Foundation, Jess Wergo is on that group. And those are some examples of the steering committee that's really going to dive into some of the work we're going to talk about in just a second. The focus groups that they've done, they've done over 10 of these and these have been five to 15 people. But these have been early childhood educators. We met with the NRV Home Builders' Association a few weeks ago. We had a student group. There was a nonprofit group that Jess pulled together for them, some of our young professionals in the area. These are just some examples of the types of focus groups that they're looking at. And then there've been one-on-one interviews. This is a lot of times people who couldn't make a meeting or weren't able to be part of a focus group, but it's also our elected leadership, business owners, and some of our organizational leaders have been part of that. We also have an executive committee that is made up of leadership for each of the entities. They meet less frequently and are sort of just getting updates at this point. The steering committee, as well as the staff level working group, are doing a lot of the day-to-day and taking in the information at this point. And then I have to also thank you guys and the other partners. The communications teams have been a big part of the media releases and making sure that we're getting information to the constituencies for each group. So today I wanted to highlight the survey, our most recent media release, and some of the media that you may have seen, TV, radio, and newspaper have picked up that the survey is out. This graphic, the one on the left, you can use for social, the one on the right is a flyer. And I shared those with Vicki. She's going to make sure you have access to those. And then I have some printed flyers because I had them with me and she has a few of those too, if you just want to take one of those. But the survey questions, because we already have some of this groundwork done, these survey questions really build on that context. So it might not look like a survey you've taken before. You might notice there's a lot of questions about medical care in our area, but that's based on the input that's been received so far. That's just one example. But it's really trying to build on what we've heard and make sure that they have the context that really makes sense for us and the work that we're trying to do. And the survey will be open until about mid-February, so you have time now. I tell people it takes about 10 minutes, but there's a lot of open-ended boxes, text boxes. So if you have a lot of passion and want to fill those boxes up, it might take a little bit longer, but you're certainly welcome to do that. And if we were looking at this from a timeline or from a project management, you can see we're probably somewhere right along prioritization and that's why it's important that we're getting the survey responses now. The framework development is those, is that committee structure that you've seen. This prioritization is hearing from as many folks in our community as we possibly can to hear what those issues are, particularly this is focused on a lot of quality of life issues. And the quality of life comes up a lot when we're talking to folks, housing comes up a lot. Nothing that would really surprise you as, as board members. The other thing that's nice is nothing's really off the table. Every participant, including Montgomery County, Virginia Tech, Christiansburg, Blacksburg, each entity has not said, "We won't talk about any particular subject." So as of right now, everything is really up for discussion and I think that's really helpful as the group continues to do the work, as the surveys come in to help shape the potential direction. And then, of course, the next step after we do that is to reflect everything back because it won't just go straight to a final product. There will be more community engagement after the survey. The other thing I'll share that we do hear a lot about is recruiting and retention of talent in our area. We're hearing that from the business community a lot and it's one of the things that, again, you'll notice reflected in the survey questions. As we look forward to when this initiative ends, it ends by the summer, but obviously we won't have every solution by then. The ending of Partnership for Progress and this work will hopefully give us a framework that won't be staff-specific and it won't be person-specific. It will be about how to move forward regardless of who's in which role and have a direction for all of us. So with that, I'm going to say you can go to our website to subscribe for updates. There's an email there that I've also shared here and it's on the flyer that you have. With any questions, it goes to our full project team, so it's constantly monitored. But we really appreciate the time to make sure that the full board could ask questions and get this update and make sure that if you're getting questions from your constituents, that you have the information you need. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and see what kind of questions we have and I'm going to start with Supervisor Biggs.
I don't have any questions. I'm sort of the cheerleader of the little group I'm in because I'm really excited about this because it's something that has needed to be done for a really long time. And so what I'm hoping is that the outcome, as Emily sort of alluded to, there's a framework that has developed so that all of these things that have been put on the table can somehow be addressed and, you know, maybe answers or solutions can become a part of a working framework that goes on. And that's my hope. And I'm, I'm, I know that we probably will be looking at that in, in a way of accountability. But what I feel, the reason I feel so positive about this is that the group is really listened to and really respected for what we're saying. And I don't know, probably Steve has the same experience. And I felt that this has been really important because, as Emily said, nothing is off the table. Even things that maybe we're uncomfortable to come up with have been put on the table and are trying to be addressed. have been put on the table and are trying to be addressed. And thank you for all your work on it.
Thanks, Gary. And I'm going to go a little out of order and skip to Vice Chair Fidzikowski because you're involved in this group as well, if you've got anything to add or say.
Yeah, the thing I'm looking forward to is the actionable steps because right from our very first meeting, we talked about that. And I thought, I can't even imagine what they would be. But they have been basically challenged to do that, and that's part of their gig, I guess. But I'm glad you mentioned the fact that when they started talking to us and finding out that we do communicate very well between all the organizations in the county, I think they were a little bit surprised. But like you said, they're probably used to going into train wrecks, and we don't have that. But I think it's moving forward very well, but I'm really looking forward to that, the steps.
Okay. And does anybody have any questions? Supervisor Ben?
So part of probably what, I have two questions. Part of what you're probably working on or including is like the livability initiative type of stuff. They did a lot of work, right? And that's quality of life and all that kind of stuff. How does that kind of fit?
Well, as I mentioned, Jess is on our steering committee, which really helps, as is Kevin Byrd. And so we have a lot of consistency to make sure there's not duplication. But it's okay if there's some overlap because we think that work is really valuable. And now that we're 10 years past livability, this can be a little bit of a refresh. I'll also be presenting at the livability update in March. If you're not registered, you still can. But they will have a lot of, you know, localized items. This one is particularly about quality of life, though. And it's good to have some of those same partners around the table that worked on it, like I said, 11 years ago.
And so my follow-up question is, if this dissolves by next summer or whatever, whenever it does dissolve, what happens to all the accountability that should be happening after that?
So part of the challenge that we've given to the consultant team is how does this live on? You'll notice that the URL is a generic one. Does it live with a group that has, you know, charge, that can keep the transparency and the accountability, you know, easily available online? Does it get transferred to one of the partners? Could the regional commission take this and run with it? Those are not real things. Those are things I just made up. But it is intentionally portable for that reason because we don't have a predetermined outcome. And that has been really a challenge as we've talked to folks about this work is like, what's going to be the end? We don't know. And I see that as a really good thing because as of this morning, we had 600 survey responses. If next week we have 2,000, it's a really good thing we didn't get too far along, you know, with what the outcome would be before hearing from folks. So we don't know exactly, but we do know that accountability on those actionable steps is built into this process.
Any other questions? Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Hey, thank you, Emily. My question is, has or will the foundation have any, the Virginia Tech Foundation have any role either in the work, you know, leading up to whatever takeaways there are or in some of the, you know, more actionable things that come out of this at the end?
Sure. The Virginia Tech Foundation is one of our stakeholders on the steering committee. So Elizabeth McLeanahan serves on our steering committee. We actually, the CRC is doing some visioning and strategic work, looking ahead as they're going through a change right now. And we're making sure that we're in alignment. They know about what we have going on, and we know about what they have going on so that they can hopefully complement one another. But yes, the foundation does have a role.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for being with us tonight, Emily. Great to see you back in the Government Center, although temporarily. We appreciate the update.
I'll come back anytime. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda are our public hearings for this evening. Our first public hearing tonight is on fiscal year 2526 counties budget. And Ms. Hill, do you have a few words?
Yes, I do. This marks the official beginning of our fiscal year 26 budget process. And the process will conclude April 21st is the scheduled date to have the board set a tax rate and adopt a budget. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is to get input from citizens and allow the board to hear comments they may have about our upcoming budget.
Okay. Fantastic. All right. So on the screens around the room, almost there, are our guidelines for public hearings and public address.
I think I'm just going to keep it like this, April.
We'll just leave it that way. It's fine, too. And I don't have anybody signed up to speak on this public hearing specifically on the 2526 budget. Does anybody in the audience want to speak to the, to this public hearing? Okay. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close that public hearing. And we have a second public hearing tonight. This is on the general reassessment frequency. And Ms. Hill, you have a few words to say about that as well?
Yes, I do. Montgomery County currently reassesses on a four-year process, a four-year cycle. And staff has presented information to the Board of Supervisors about the possibility of increasing the frequency of reassessment to make that either an annual or biennial process. We last spoke with you about that on January 13th. And the purpose of reassessments are to restore equity within the county so that values are at a uniform percentage of the market value. And in a time when real estate values are changing, when the market is changing within the county, more frequent assessments would allow that accurate alignment of market values and assessed values. It's important also to remember that assessed values alone do not determine how much tax people pay. It's a two-factor calculation. The assessed value and the tax rate both have to be taken into consideration to determine how much tax is owed. Finally, we've discussed the option of transitioning from a contractor-based reassessment program to an in-house program. And some of the benefits of that could include better customer service, better service for our citizens by providing a higher level of accountability and more transparency. So at this point in the process, we just wanted to get some feedback from any citizens who might want to speak to these topics and hear what they have to say. And then staff will present additional information to you at an upcoming work session.
Okay, thank you. We have one person that has signed up to speak on the County General Reassessment Frequency Public Hearing tonight, Mr. Wayman Pack, if you would like to come forward.
Evening, Board. Feel kind of like I'm in a time loop here. My name is Wayman Pack, and I live on Piney Woods Road in Ryner. And as I listen to the proposals for changing the real estate reassessments, from our current four-year frequency to either an annual or biennial one, I could not help but notice how the change was proposed in favorable opinions, suppositions, and possibilities. Before we go any farther down this road, I would invite all of you that have not done so to look back at the presentation during the October 10, 2023 meeting. Mr. Mark McGruder, who is the Montgomery County Director of Management and Budget, told us at that meeting of the additional cost and pitfalls of this change. Everyone mentions 2008 as an outlier year. And while I do not disagree, nobody knew it was coming in 2007. It can happen then, and it can happen again. The amounts quoted in his presentation are now more than a year old. Does this board believe that the cost today would be higher or lower than then? Biennial costs then of almost $100,000 a year and an annual cost of over $415,000. Some of these costs are not one-time costs but ongoing, such as salaries, benefits, and equipment maintenance. The previous contractor, as well as our previous county administrator, spoke then of the difficulty in hiring the necessary qualified people to staff a new department such as this. Of course, even if we are able to hire these individuals, a new department which may well have an annualized cost of over $500,000 does give another reason for a new tax increase. What happens if the property taxes were flat or even decreased through the new reassessment period? According to Mr. McGruder, we would also lose the 1% we now receive from the state to help us recover the associated costs of the reassessment. If we lose that 1%, we raise taxes to make up that difference. If the revenue neutral rate that people spoke about happens to be higher than the current rate, then the revenue neutral rate is considered a tax increase and has to be advertised as such. Maybe you have dollar signs in your eyes from all the new construction going on in the county is causing tunnel vision. But also quoting Mr. McGruder, while a rising market adds increased value and additional tax revenue, a falling market could mean multiple years of tax rate increases to generate the same revenue even with new construction growth. If I understood some of the comments from the last meeting, every house would not be visited during a more frequent reassessment because of the time constraints involved. How would the decisions be made on what houses or communities to visit? Does it not visiting every house allow some properties to be undervalued as you seem so keen to avoid? There are 113 counties and city counties in Virginia. And of these are 95 standalone counties, of which Montgomery is the 11th most populous. As I have previously stated, if only 27 of the 95 Virginia counties now assess on either an annual or biennial frequency, why are the remainder not doing so if it is so beneficial? Is it really in our best interest to create a whole new department of local government to pay for each and every year? This department will add to our annual budget, which will increase each year with annual raises. As stewards for how our taxes are spent, please look at the whole picture before making your decision. Equity and not having a big tax jump were mentioned. But no one mentioned how much interest of growth my investments may make over a four-year span if I didn't have to spend it out on taxes every year or two.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak on this public hearing? Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Chris Walsh, 1370 Ruby Street, Christiansburg. You know, they talked about, you all have talked about this, you know, at the last meeting. I got a little bit of it. Mr. Fidzikowski, we agree for once. What are they going to do for the other year if you only do it two years? You know, are they going to play pickup stucks all day or, you know, Legos? What? You really need to get it right because you have it in the past. As I said, across the street from my house at the last two reassessments ago, there was a house with a big red sign that said unfit for human habitation because it used to be a meth lab. It went up at the same amount, like it was $20,000, like finishing your basement would go up. So obviously, even then, people, they weren't going through the neighborhoods to every house. Last assessment, they said that I still had a single roof, had a metal roof for, what, four years now? So still weren't going around all the neighborhoods. And I agree with the previous speaker. How are you going to pick who gets assessed? I know that the way it works is mainly just, it seems anyway, that the county wants more money, and whoever you hire assesses the values a certain percentage higher. I think last time it was around 30%. Time before that, I forget what the percentage was. Everybody's stuff, it's just a big shell game to make it look good, is what it seems to me, a lot of other taxpayers in the county. You know, y'all need to fix the system. I agree with that. But I'm not sure that increasing to the thing to every year, to two years, I mean, and a lot of the properties I don't see. There was a house that just sold down the street from mine not long ago that went for less than the assessed value. So I don't think that y'all are getting the right values from whoever it is you're hiring to do this work. And I'm not sure that it would be much better if you hired them in-house. I don't know what the answer is, but that's not my job to come up with that, y'alls. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak on the general Okay, seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close that public hearing. And that moves us to public address. We're going to put the guidelines for public address back up on the screen. And I do have one person that has signed up for public address. That's Mr. Bob Miller. If you want to come forward, state your name and where you reside, and you'll have
I'm Robert Miller, 3065 Mud Pike, Christiansburg. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I am a member of the Board of the Montgomery Museum. And while my comments may not be official to the Board, I think that they will accurately reflect what they might say to you. Five years ago, our Board sat on the porch floor around a few rocking chairs because that was the largest space we had in the historic cottage on Pepper Street. And look at us now. Thanks to your interest, your generosity, and your unanimous approval as the seven components of the heart, and by natural appropriation, we have been awarded more than $200,000 of the Virginia 250 Preservation Fund announced by the Governor last week. With $20 million to distribute and $95 million in requests from 166 organizations, we were honored to be among the 35 organizations selected for funding. The award will allow us to creatively tell Montgomery County's story and to construct ADA accessibility to the largest exhibit space in our new museum. It's currently served by a long flight of stairs, which I and others find increasingly challenging. I'm not sure if you can realize the depth of our gratitude for this and all that Angie, the administrative staff, and each of you do for Montgomery County. We pledge to you to do a noteworthy and entertaining promotion of our common history for Virginia and Montgomery County's semi-quincentennial. Let's call it the 250th anniversary. Parenthetically, last week, I spoke at the 10th anniversary of our beautifully restored and rebuilt Auburn Middle School. What a pleasure it was to see such a spacious and accommodating campus. I also wondered how I once managed 550 middle and high schoolers in the core of the 1938 building. I'm proud to be a citizen of and pay taxes to support such a progressive community and county. While I am glad to try and answer any questions, our new director, Sherri Wyatt, will be with you on February 10th with more details. And our former director, Casey Jones, whom I spoke with today, sends his thanks and appreciation to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and congratulations. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak during our public address? Seeing nobody else come forward, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. There is no addendum tonight. So moving on to items of consent, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Mr. Kit?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Chair de Mots.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Moving to new business, our first item of new business is to amend our annual appointments. This is on the Fairview District Home Board. Ms. Hill, did you have something to say about this?
We need to appoint Scott Woodrum to the Fairview District Home. We appointed Alex Strickler, who is also a staff person at the last meeting, but she serves on the Fairview District Home, Inc., and cannot be on both boards.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Supervisor Bone.
So, there are a few Boards, Commissions, Committees that us supervisors are on that do not have a backup person, and this is one of them. And just last week, I attended, as a member of the public, one of the meetings that I used to attend, and the person who took my place wasn't there. And it's a good thing that I was there to listen, and I took Marty's advice about the section that said I could attend the closed meeting if it was relevant to the county. So, given that this Board feels it's really important for everyone to attend meetings, I would recommend that in most cases, we, for those committees, commissions, that do not, cannot have an official second person, that we go about it that way and unofficially appoint somebody to be the backup, like in this case. So, doesn't change what we're voting on. I just wanted to share with you some thoughts and some discussions that I've had with fellow Board members.
Okay. Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
I served on that Board for a couple of years, I believe, early in my term, and there was an alternate. I don't know when the alternate stopped.
Vicky, do you recall if there's an alternate for the Fairview District Home? I think there is an alternate for that, but we can check on that. For every Board or Commission that has alternates, we do appoint, have the Board appoint alternates.
So we'll get some follow-up information? Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kitz.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Chair de Mots.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Our next item is support resolutions related to BEED grants. This is for multiple internet service providers. Ms. Hill?
Yes. BEED is the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program. It's a federal program that passes through the state, and Virginia's allocation of BEED funding is $1.48 billion. There are some differences between the BEED program and the VODI program that we've been participating in. BEED is awarded directly to the providers. The application areas are predetermined before people can apply. When we went through the VODI process, part of the application was identifying underserved and unserved areas, and this case, those areas have already been predetermined by the program. There's no local match of county dollars for this program. The providers are responsible for any matching funds. And another major difference in the programs is that previously underserved was defined as download speeds of 25 mbps per, which stands for megabytes per second, and upload speeds of below three. And now the standard has changed to 120, so that's a significant difference that will pick up some homes that previously were not eligible for this. So three providers have requested that the Board adopt a resolution of support and also provide letters of support. Our current VODI partner, Gigabeam, as well as Citizens Telephone and Zyotel, have all asked for us to do this, and that will assist them in receiving 10 extra or additional points in their application process that they won't receive if there's no support from the locality.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion from anybody?
Would that interfere with what we're doing now?
I ask that question, and it won't interfere with what we're doing now. There is some overlap on some homes, but it will, if a home is covered in the current process, then it wouldn't be awarded to another provider. If it was awarded to the other provider, then Gigabeam, which is the current provider, could protest that there's a process for that. So I've spoken with the Gigabeam folks, and they're okay with all of that.
Just my concern is, we've been working on this forever in three days. If we do this, and then another provider comes in and steps over top of Gigabeam, that's what I'd wanna see, just put on layaway.
Right, and that I've verified, they tell me that will not happen. The BEED program is very early in the process. The applications are just being submitted in the next month or so, so it will be quite some time before the funding is allocated. So I think that, I know that hope is a four-letter word, but I really hope that Gigabeam is complete before these grant funds are, or this process has really gotten underway.
Well, I think he said on the news today, it'd be finished by the end of the year.
Okay.
I seen Steve on there, too. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kitz.
Aye.
Chair de Mots.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And our final item of new business this evening is to schedule a public hearing on a boundary adjustment with the town of Christiansburg. Mr. McMahon, did you have anything that you wanted to say about this?
Yeah, just real briefly, it's a small parcel, about 1.04 acres that's currently owned by, a company owned by Roger Woody, and the property is over near Life Bible College off 80, kinda joins 81. It's kind of a weird-shaped parcel, almost looks like a triangle. The only really access through that parcel is from the town properties, and so the current property owner approached both the town of Christiansburg and the county about considering a friendly boundary adjustment to move it into the town. The purpose for the property, he has the intention of using his current property, which is about 17 acres, and then this extra acre, he's gonna put in R1 housing. So the county would not lose any income from this, because the real estate would be still taxed as it is now. And so, I also talked to planning, and they were supportive of the idea, too, because it made more sense to be developed with the town property next to it, so. This will start the process of setting a public hearing for February, and then after that, we enter into a boundary adjustment agreement, and then it has to go to the courts, and the courts have to enter an order authorizing the property to then move into the incorporated area of the town. It's still being the county, though, obviously.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion about this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kitz.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair de Mots.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And now we've moved to our reports section, and we start again with County Attorney, Mr. McMahon.
I have no report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Hill, do you have a report from the county administrator this evening?
I have a brief report. I enjoyed attending VACO with several of you last week, and we got to meet with several of our legislators. I don't wanna steal anyone's report, so that's all I'll say about that. I think the trip went well. And Friday, when I returned at noon, we had a service awards luncheon, and I tried to quickly add up the years of service that were represented at that event, and said it was over 500, which was correct, but it was actually 785 years of service recognized that day. And Supervisor Grafsky and Vice Chair Fidzikowski joined me at that. It was really great, and I know the employees gave us some very positive feedback. They appreciate those acknowledgements. As Mr. Miller said, the museum did receive the VA 250 grant, so we'll have an appropriation of our match that the Board gave consensus for previously, and if you have any questions, I think that they can be answered at that time. We'll have that at our next meeting.
Thank you. And to Board reports, we'll start with Supervisor King. Do you have a report for us this evening?
I don't have no report, but I would like to announce that I will be running for reelection this year. Thank you.
Supervisor Kitz?
Just wanna remind everybody that there are cameras on the buses to catch people going around it, and there are cameras active in the school zones. Just be aware, so if you wanna pass a school bus, you're gonna pop on a camera. Just wanna let everybody know as a public services announcement. That's all I have. Thanks.
But only in the county.
Supervisor Bone?
I don't have a report. I would like to say that I will not seek reelection. Also, I heard from someone that Gigabeam, if they wanna locate one of their big boxes on your property, they give you free internet service for the rest of your life. I was very impressed with that. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, well, I wanna clear up something that Supervisor Bone brought up. I was the supervisor that was appointed to the New River Community Services Board at our last meeting. I'm looking really forward to being on that Board. I served on it previously for nine years. I was able to have the privilege of being the Vice Chair and Chair at times with that Board. And I let them know, as soon as I got appointed, that I would not be able to attend the meeting last Thursday because I was at the Virginia Association of Counties Government Day, along with Chair de Mots, and Supervisor Kitz, and Supervisor Grafsky, and Ms. Hill, which is a very important thing to go to because that is where we talk to our General Assembly members. So I did have my orientation today for the New River Valley Community Services Board, so I wanted to clear that up. The other thing I wanted to clear up is, I'm not sure, I need to ask Mr. McMahon about this legal thing about, what is it that Supervisor Bone was referring to about going to a closed meeting? I'm not sure about that.
I think the issue was, can a Board member, supervisor, who's not on a, let's say, community, on an agency board, can they attend closed session? And that answer is no unless that agency invites them in for some reason that they could provide whatever the topic is under closed session, because they're not a Board member under the public body definition of FOIA. So the Board member would be the one who goes to the closed session, not a supervisor, just because you may be on the Board that appointed that person.
Okay, all right, thank you. And the only thing I'll say about the General Assembly that I felt, they have a short session, and I was amazed at the number of bills that were sort of trying to control local government's ability to have decisions over land use, the placement of data centers, et cetera, and we really made a point of explaining to our folks that we wanted to have local control. And as you probably guessed, I did bring up funding for public schools. I think that needs to be a real push right now because the study that was done and requested by the General Assembly, called the JALARC Study, showed that the General Assembly does not fund their share of money for public ed. So I felt like our representatives did a really good job of listening to us and attending to us later on when we met with them. So I'm thanking everybody for going. It was good. Thank you.
Supervisor Grafsky?
So as mentioned, you know, I attended VACO with my colleagues here last week, and so I echo all of their sentiments, but, you know, one of the other things I took away from that was the great feedback that we were given as a Board, just regarding the cohesiveness that we worked together with, and really also that the way that we interact with and trust the county staff and all the work that they do. So that was kind of a prideful point to take away from the VACO conference. As Ms. Hill mentioned, I attended the Service Milestones Celebration on Friday, drove down here from Richmond to make that. I mean, we celebrated folks from their, you know, very first service milestone of five years, up until our top employee, or longest-serving employee of 40 years, right? So just imagine all the experience and things that those folks have seen over those years, and it was just fun to be a part of that moment with them and get to meet each one of them as they came up and accepted their awards. And then just lastly, as the representative for District E, I feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't just say a little thing about Bill Brown, since this was his district, and while unfortunately I didn't know him as well as some of you guys, I did have the opportunity to speak with him a few times, and I've met members of his family, and all that I can say is that man, you know, embodied service, and this community lost a hero in that sense. And so, you know, I think that's the reason that we all get into this, is for the service, but, you know, his passing just really highlights for me how important it is that, you know, we're given these opportunities and we do the best that we can with him. So he'll be sorely missed, not only in my district, but across this part of the Commonwealth.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Fidzikowski? You promised us a big announcement at our last.
Yeah, you gotta wait. You gotta wait for that.
Okay.
I got a couple of other things. I, too, would like to say a word about Bill Brown. When I was assigned here as a trooper back in 1983, got to know Bill, always, always very upbeat, always had something nice to say to you. I felt like he kinda picked me out of everybody else, but I think that's just the way he made everybody feel, that you were a special person, and he's gonna remember you, and he did. And he's definitely gonna be missed. I certainly don't think I will ever equal his accomplishments, but I'm okay living in his shadow because he was a fine person. The other thing I wanted to mention was the service awards. We've all talked about it, but I tell you what, that was such a good time to see our employees. I mean, a lot of smiles, a lot of slaps on the back, a lot of good comments. I encouraged them, even the 40-year person, you know, there's still a few more good years left. Keep at it, because just like Supervisor Grafsky said, that's a lot of experience, and you really hate to see experience leave, but again, that's life, so. My big announcement was, and I kinda feel guilty about this, for about the last, I don't know, six months or so, I've been telling people, you know, I think this will be my last year, you know, I think I've done what I can, I intended on staying for two terms, which I'm going to do, but after a long discussion with my wife, she says I should stay on the Board. So I plan on running for reelection if my constituents in District C will have me. I'd like to be around to see some of the things coming up because we have so many projects in the works, and I think back to my predecessor, Gary, that he wasn't here to see, you know, the field that was named after him finished. He passed away before that, but I'd like to see some of these things, and there's so many. I started thinking, there's no way to list them all, but Christiansburg High School, if I don't stick around, I'm not gonna see that finished. The 250th year anniversary is a Um, the 250th year anniversary is a biggie, and I really think that our museum got recognized, because how can you ignore it when the county has the same date as the country? I mean, that's just a, that's just a unique thing, but, um, improvements in Old Town Field, um, the, uh, Elliston Fire and EMS Building, um, has got some way to go, and, um, we're gonna be making some changes here in this government center, and, um, things are just really progressing very well, and...
Don't forget the train.
And the train, yeah, that's right. Oh, no, the, I can't, I can't list them all, there's just too many. And, but I don't wanna miss them, is what I'm, what I'm saying, so, I, hopefully I'll be around to see those done, but probably we will come up with more and more projects, but I can't keep doing it forever. That's, I'll leave it at that. But, uh, that's all I got.
Great, thank you. And I have, um, just a, a list of thank yous that I want to, um, put out there. I wanna thank, uh, Senator Hackworth and Delegates Obenchain and Ballard for spending time, uh, meeting with us, uh, breaking bread with us, and spending some time just building those relationships, learning about what Montgomery County needs, and also sharing, um, some of the things that they're excited about for this year's very brief General Assembly. So I do want to specifically thank them for their time, their open doors, and their willingness to spend time with us. I also, um, want to give a huge thanks to Ms. Hill for herding the cats. Um, we, we do not make it easy for her to, uh, move us through the General Assembly and get us to all of our obligations, so thank you very much. And I would be remiss if I didn't also thank our, um, county staff that put a lot of work and effort into coordinating our travel to and from these type of events, making sure that we have places to stay, um, and that we have meals booked, um, and so in the hubbub of all the crazy busyness, we are very taken care of, so thank you to them as well. And then a final thank you to Vice Chair Fidzikowski and Supervisor Grafsky for attending, um, the Employee Service Awards Luncheon. I know several of us couldn't make it because of other commitments in our schedule, so it meant a lot, um, to have your representation there. Uh, Marty is...
Yeah, um, but, but before you adjourn, I just, I just thought we should publicly point out that our Board Clerk over there, Ms. Sweeney, is at 35 years she was recognized, so she wasn't quite at 40, but she still has five years to go, so...
Right, so... And that's right, she can't leave yet, because she hasn't made it to 40.
You have a list. Congratulations and thank you for 35 years. Um, and I have nothing else, so this meeting stands adjourned.